Pledge of Allegiance.
And we're going.
Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the Party of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning or good afternoon. We used to have these in the morning. Good afternoon. This is the Yumitilla County Board of Commissioners meeting, March 12th, 2025. And thank you for being here today. Our meeting is a public forum and we do have a call-in option provided. The meeting is being video and audio recorded with minutes taken. And our meeting is also being livestreamed. If you wish to speak to the board, make sure that you come up to the podium, give your name and address for the record, and please keep your comments under three minutes so that we have time to hear from everyone. And please share if you are speaking on behalf of others. So, welcome everyone for being here today. Are there any awards, recognitions, or correspondence?
None, other than, I think there were several great events last week. And I think it was good to get to all of them, but I think that AOC this last Friday, John, you did a great, Commissioner Baker did a great job at the legislative conference when we covered a lot of ground in a hurry, so I did. It's a, it is a different kind of legislative session and AOC is definitely in the middle of the mix. So, thank you for that.
Thank you for nothing, okay. Approval of minutes, a previous meeting, February 19th, 2025. Been moved in seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And March 5th, 2025. Been moved in seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Aye, okay, thank you. Additions to the agenda, are there any? Public input and recognition of visitors. So, we'll go ahead and start with the business items. We're going to move out of our regular meeting into a public hearing. The meeting is now open to the floor for public comment on land use hearing Hermiston co-adoption. Ready for me?
Not yet.
Okay. So, my first or my second one of these, so hang on just a second, all right. So, I'm calling this hearing to order. And today is Wednesday, March 12th, 2025. Ladies and gentlemen, I call this land use hearing before the Yumitilla County Board of Commissioners to order. My name is Cindy Timmons, I am the Chair of the Yumitilla County Board of Commissioners. Our role today is to conduct a public hearing concerning a request to co-adopt the City of Hermiston's comprehensive plan map amendment concerning the subject properties. I will begin the hearing by asking staff to summarize the application. I will then ask the applicant to testify, followed by those in favor of the application. Then, any persons in opposition or who have questions or concerns will also have a chance to speak. If there is opposition and questions, staff may respond to them. The commissioners also may ask the staff and witness questions throughout the hearing until the record closes. Any person with any interest in today's agenda may offer relevant oral and or written testimony, but please only speak when I identify you for that purpose. When you testify, please begin by clearly stating your name and address. If you represent someone else, please say so. If you have any exhibits you want to consider, such as a copy of your testimony, photographs, petitions, or other documents or physical evidence, please provide it to me or the staff. It will be marked as part of the record. I am going to call for any abstentions, bias, conflict of interest, declaration of ex parte contact, or objections to jurisdiction. None? The following declaration is required to be read prior to the beginning of the hearing. The agenda identifies the applicable substantive criteria for evaluating the request. Staff will review these criteria. All testimony and evidence must be directed toward these criteria. Failure to raise an issue with sufficient detail to afford the decision-making body and the parties an opportunity to respond, the issue precludes appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. I call for staff report.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm here today, my name is Tierney Samiati, I'm a planner here at Yumitilla County. I'm here to present the City of Hermiston's Plan Map Amendment Co-Adoption with the county's Plan Map Amendment Number P-138-24. With Dennis Gacy being the applicant and Victory Lighthouse Church, or David Johnson, Larry J. and Florence R. Binghamston, and Three Rivers Organ Property LLC. On July 8th of 2024, Hermiston City Council adopted ordinance 2358 amending the comprehensive plan map from urbanizable to urban for approximately 25 acres located on the north side of East Theater Lane. The city council also adopted ordinance 2359 annexing said property effective upon co-adoption ordinance 2358. The City of Hermiston's Joint Management Agreement Section E10 requires comprehensive plan amendments applicable in the urban growth area to be processed by the city. The joint management agreement requires amendments to be adopted by ordinance first by the city and then to the county for co-adoption review. The Hermiston City Council held a public hearing on July 8th of 2024 and approved the Plan Map Amendment and subsequently adopted ordinances 2358 and 2359. The Yumitilla County Planning Commission held the county's first evidentiary hearing for co-adoption on January 23rd, 2025 at the Justice Center Media Room for 700 Northwest Pioneer Placement Pendleton. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the comprehensive plan map amendment co-adoption with a vote 7-0. Yumitilla County Board of Commissioners' decision is final unless appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals. While in co-adoption of the City of Hermiston ordinance, the subject properties will be annexed into the city. The following page in your packets has a map showing where the city limits line is to date and the three parcels that will be incorporated into the city if you choose.
Are there any questions? For staff?
And for me, this is a great job. Pretty thorough. Thank you.
So, I believe that we have an applicant representative here from PBS as well as the owners and anyone else, if anybody had a question.
So, I'm going to call for the proponents. An applicant and a representative?
Yes, this is Rebecca Wallstrom from PBS Engineering and Environmental. Here in attendance, thank you for considering this and your thoughtful review of the documents. It's, it's a really, I think that this will be a great asset. This land will be a great asset to Hermiston and also help with the housing needs of the city and with, especially with all the utilities that are directly adjacent to the land. It's, it's a, it's a win-win in my estimation. So, thank you again for reviewing it and considering it today.
Anyone else online?
So, my name is Dennis Gacy, I'm actually the owner and would also like to add our thank you for consideration of this project. And we're looking forward to getting started and doing some engineering and build the community. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Call for opponents. Anyone online? I'm now going to call for comments from public agencies. No one online? Now is the time for rebuttal. This is proponents' opportunity to rebut any testimony, which we didn't have. I'm now going to call for the request for continuance or to keep the record open. The record open. If no one else has anything to add, we're going to go ahead and close the hearing. And now is the time for deliberation and decision. Oh. We now move out of the public hearing and back into our regular meeting. Time for deliberation and decision.
I have no additional comments, but I do move for approval.
It's been moved in seconded. I just wanted to comment. Wow, this is amazing. And I hats off to staff for putting this together. I thought, I thought the traffic analysis was wonderful, especially almost trying to see in a crystal ball to see where Hermiston's traffic patterns are going to be in 20 years. And I actually have had people come to me and ask me how I can fix Hermiston's traffic patterns. And I decided that this was very, very well done. It was very thorough and easy to understand. I just thought that staff did a great job. Thank you. It's been moved in seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion passes?
Thanks, Tierney.
Item number two, land use hearing code amendment, that's a public hearing. I'm going to call the hearing to order. And we are going to move out of our regular meeting and into a public hearing. Today is Wednesday, March 12th, 2025. Ladies and gentlemen, I call this land use hearing before the Yumitilla County Board of Commissioners to order. My name is Cindy Timmons, I am the Chair of the Yumitilla County Board of Commissioners. Our role today is to conduct a public hearing concerning our request to establish a new use within exclusive farm use zone properties under the Home Occupations cottage industries through a text amendment within the Yumitilla County Development Code. I will begin the hearing by asking staff to summarize the application. I will then ask the applicant to testify, followed by those in favor of the application. Then, any persons in opposition or who have questions or concerns will also have a chance to speak. If there, if there is opposition or questions, staff may respond to them. The commissioners will also ask the staff and witness questions throughout the hearing until the record closes. Any person with any interest in today's agenda may offer relevant oral and or written testimony, but please only speak when I identify you for that purpose. When you testify, please begin by clearly stating your name and address. If you represent someone else, please say so. If you have any exhibits you want us to consider, such as a copy of your testimony, photographs, petitions, or other documents or physical evidence, please provide it to me or the staff. It will be marked as part of the record. Now call for any abstentions, bias, conflict of interest, declaration of ex parte, ex parte contact, and objections to jurisdiction. The following declaration is required to be read prior to the beginning of the hearing. The agenda identifies the applicable substantive criteria for evaluating the request. Staff will review these criteria. All testimony and evidence must be directed toward these criteria. Failure to raise an issue with sufficient detail to afford the decision-making body and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. And now call for staff report.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners, my name is Megan Dopchavsky and I'm the Planning Manager for Yumitilla County. The applicant today is requesting the Yumitilla County adopt a permit path and criteria for establishing commercial gatherings and weddings as a home occupation exclusive farm use zone. The county's current home occupation standards have a limitation of no more than 10 parking spaces, which currently limits the number of people that can be on the site at any time. The applicant requests to amend UCDC Yumitilla County Development Code, Section 152-178, to allow for a subsection of home occupations, which would be titled "Post Commercial Gatherings and Wedding." For some background, the applicant's been working with county staff to develop language for criteria of approval and alongside the county Department of Land Conservation staff. They did this prior to submitting the proposed text amendment language. The proposed language was modeled after other counties in Oregon with similar home occupation language, mainly Hood River County, although several other counties in the state have adopted similar home occupation standards. Of note, Hood River County's adopted ordinance allows for no more than one event per day. The proposed language before you today includes statutory requirements, such as the limited number of employees, which is limited to five, as well as other language specific to the proposed use. The applicant's proposed language begins on page 11 of your printed packet or on page 13 of the online version. New text is shown in bold and underlined font. First subsection, little a, is added to separate current home occupation standards from the weddings and gatherings' home occupation standards. On the next page is the proposed criteria for establishing weddings and gathering. Text in black font is existing home occupation language pulled from the above subsection, little a. Text in red font is entirely new language, which would be unique to establishing weddings and gatherings. You will know that there is a large number of criteria that would have to be satisfied, 34 exactly. That's when the applicant spent a lot of time developing this language in order to minimize potential issues and conflict. This morning, staff provided you with Exhibit D, which I'm asking to be included into the record, which is a highlighted copy of the Land Use Board of Appeals Number 2022-085 and 086, which was "A Thousand Friends of Oregon and Friends of Marion County" versus Marion County. I'm asking this to be included in the record. This land use appeals decision was remanded back to Marion County, but not because Luba found that events can't be permitted as a home occupation, but because the county did not adequately address how only five employees could serve or manage 750 guests. Specifically, Luba concluded that, and this is in quotes, "Nothing in the phrase 'home occupation' prohibits the county from authorizing event businesses as home occupations," end quote. That's located on page nine of the Luba decision. However, in this scenario, Marion County was limiting the number of events per home occupation to 18 events per calendar year on the property, and each event could not exceed three consecutive. So, applicant before you today is requesting a maximum of 50 events per calendar year with no time constraints on days in a row. Marion County's previous approval that was remanded was up to 18 events per calendar day, and each event could last three days. The criteria of approval for amendments are found in Yumitilla County Development Code, Sections 152-750 to 152-755. Applicable statewide planning goals 1 through 14 have also been evaluated. This matter is a legislative matter because it proposes to amend the text of the Yumitilla County Development Code. Therefore, the county has the authority to consider and approve the text amendment. The process of approval by the county involves review by the county planning commission with a recommendation to the Board of County Commission. At the February 2030-2025 Planning Commission hearing, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the proposed text amendment with a vote of 6-2. Following the Planning Commission hearing, planning received three written comments in opposition of the proposed amendment. These comments were emailed previously to the board and the applicant. They will also need to be entered into the record as Exhibits A through C, and I would also like to include Exhibit D. The Board of Commissioners may adopt the language as recommended by the Planning Commission, or the board could deny the request to adopt the language, or the board can make changes to the recommended language as they so fit. Staff recommend that the board consider the Marion County Luba decision when basing their findings with fact. And this concludes my staff report unless there are any questions for me. Thank you.
Now, I'm going to call for proponents, the applicant and or representative.
Dear Whitney, 101 Southeast 3rd Street, Pendleton, Oregon. And we're here to, the purpose of this is to get a change to have the ag properties farm, have the opportunity to provide additional revenue from existing farm buildings. And started this project in the thought process probably a year, year and a half ago. And we're working on it and I talked with the county and we talked to the city and they're interested in having properties private. And the biggest reason, when I came to it, kept getting a scope to it, you know what? The county should have, farmers and ranchers already have marginal farmland investments that they have. So, I think it would be important for the county to give another alternative income stream for the properties and their ranch buildings and farm buildings. Otherwise, I've been in real estate for 50 years, we specialize in marketing farm and ranch properties. And I see a lot of buildings melt down, just melt, they don't put a new rub on it because how can you spend $100,000 on a property you don't have the economic use for? So, I think we could save a lot of properties and also keep that historic buildings going, the barns, big old barns, and I just think they're great to have and think that a lot of people, not a lot of people, but there were some people could utilize, these provided additional income stream to reduce the risk. There was an article in last week's Agri Times and it stated farm, which is around 55% like that over 2023. This tells you how tight this market is, has been for a year or two with weak prices, as you know, or around $6 when you take off transportation, down to $5. A farmer cannot make that work on a long basis, they're going backwards. Having to borrow my money, they're operating, but if you have something here that could allow people to have an additional income stream on their property, I think it would be very helpful. So, we met, and so I took this, we had some of the local meetings and then we went ahead and I thought, you know, let's call LCDC and discuss the concept of what we have in these buildings. And I even often have them come out and take a look at what we're looking at on the project and they came out and they could see Eastern Oregon, it has a different set of needs and demands versus the West Side. But we have statewide land use planning, which really makes it statewide. But if you're really going to use statewide land use planning, it probably shouldn't be another home or building built in Harty County is built out in burnage. Because that's the least productive ground in generally in the state. Take a lot of cows, take a lot of eggs to feed a cow in that country, better here. But I think there should be some consideration down the road too, which is a little offsetting, but looking at the east side land use planning and west side. Those are some of the bills that are in the state today to ease the cascade, be able to do some additional things in rural areas. So, and then I had, yeah, that was, bankruptcies are up 55% over 2023. So, the code amendment could help some of these farmers that might get there when we're on the wall, we're trying to work through the marketing issues with the farm products that they currently grow. Agritourism can help sustain farm operations, brings more revenue locally to motels, restaurants, and the community. Farms are challenged economically. I would have to even tell county to approve the code amendment application.
Any other proponents? Anyone online? Okay, now I'm going to call for opponents. Is there anyone online?
Yeah, I'm online, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, sir.
Thank you very much and good afternoon to you. My name is Jeff Kleiman, K-L-E-I-N-M-A-N. I am an attorney in Portland, 1207 Southwest 6, Portland 97204. And I represent a Yumitilla County farm owner, Susan Byrd, B-Y-R-D, whose address is Box 236 in Ukiah, 97880. So, I've submitted a letter in opposition. You've also received letters from "Thousand Friends of Oregon" and from Central Oregon Land Watch as well. Just referring to what the applicant just said about the need for agritourism. Let me please point out that this special purpose code amendment, which proposes to rewrite your code legislatively for the benefit of one applicant who has a project in mind, has nothing to do with agritourism, it's under the home occupation regulations. So, if there's a desire to apply for something as agritourism, that's out there. And this proposed set of changes to your code would not change that at all. We're talking about home occupations. And by definition, when you're talking about the changes that are in front of you now, there are anything but home occupations. And that's the reason that the, that LCDC recently changed the home occupation rules to make it very clear that the use has to be accessory, incidental, and subordinate to the primary residential use of a dwelling. So, somebody would have to explain to me in a way that I don't think is possible, how up to 50 events with 100 guests or up to 300 guests and 125 vehicles on the site is going to somehow be accessory, incidental, and subordinate to somebody living in the house. I mean, that's what we're talking about with home occupations. When you bring on that kind of use, it is, as I said, precisely the opposite. It couldn't be more opposite to a home occupation as now clearly defined in the state administrative rules. So, whatever Hood River County did, I haven't looked recently at the Marion County case out of Luba, but the idea here on the part of LCDC was to clarify the rules and prevent the explosion of all sorts of uses under the pretense that they're home occupations. If they are other sorts of promotional events on farmland, promoting the farm crops, or if they can qualify as agritourism, again, that's a completely different kettle of fish. So, please take a look at that very clear language that's now in the rules. The use has to be accessory, incidental, and subordinate. And ask yourself, if you were living in the dwelling on the farm, if that was your farmhouse and you lived in it and you had up to 50 weddings or parties or festivities, Cinco de Mayo or whatever, on your farm with that many guests and that many cars. And bear in mind too, that these events tend to be concentrated during the months of nice weather, right? So, they're chalk a block on summer weekends and that's- So they're chalk a block on summer weekends and and that's somehow incidental to you living in the house. That's not true at all. And what's being applied for here again, with legislation rather than a specific, a site-specific application is a party center catering center in old farm buildings with a motel, which is what the other buildings would be used for if they could be cleaned up properly. And again, is anything but a home occupation? So if the county wants to change its rules in this manner to benefit that applicant, the rules are just not going to stand up, I'm afraid. So with that, I would just point out one other thing that covers the main points that I wanted to make, that this is not a permissible set of rules that the if the applicant wants to apply for a home occupation or agritourism events for the applicant's own benefit on the applicant's particular property that's involved here, then they can do that. But they shouldn't try to slip it in without scrutiny by proposing special purpose legislation. And what I would add as a practical matter, and this is the other side of the coin from whatever the issue may be on depressed crop prices, you know, which are a periodic problem. But where is a lot of experience around the state? And Hood River County is one example. I would say Yamhill County is a huge example of what happens when you allow these sorts of events on farmland and effectively promote them on farmland when the farmers next door are trying to work. And in Yamhill County, it has some sometimes come down to stone throwing or rock throwing incidents where wedding guests who can't hear their music start throwing rocks at the farmer operating a combine or a tractor next door on the property line. This is what the law, these are the kinds of laws that the our or the kinds of happenings that our laws are designed to prevent, to prevent interference with farm practices. And you cannot just by throwing language into your code saying that the person who applies for these events or applies for the home occupation shall not interfere with farm practices. In real life, it doesn't work that way. So by opening Pandora's box for this one person, I would say the board is really messing with the freeway that farmers currently are able to operate without this sort of interference. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Sir, I have a question.
Yes.
I'm not being disrespectful, but do you live on a farm? Do you live in the rural areas?
I do not.
Okay, thank you.
My client does, and that's why I'm here.
I don't have any other question. Okay. Any other questions for this gentleman? Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you very much.
Other opponents? Anyone else online? Any comments from public agencies? Anyone online? Okay, this is the call for rebuttal opponent. This is your opportunity to rebut any testimony that was just given. Call for a request for continuance or to keep the record open? Keep it open. I'm going to close the hearing and move out of the public hearing and we're going to go back into a regular meeting. Deliberation and decision.
Can you answer this?
Okay, we are going to enter exhibits A through D into the record.
I moved, I moved to introduce A through E into the record.
D.
Exhibit.
Dog.
I'll work on these hearing. I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Now we can move out of the public hearing and back into our regular meeting. I closed the hearing, so deliberation and decision.
I would move, yeah, to to get into discussion, I would move for approval of the code amendment.
Is that as written by staff?
As written by staff, yes.
Second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'll start out. I really appreciated Jeff Kleinman's comments. I was a little disappointed when he said that this is not a home occupation. Two of my kids have been married on ranches. One was on her own. And the one thing that is very, and I've attended several, but one of the things that is completely consistent across this is it's the people that live in those ranch homes at those venues are the ones who work it. The husband, wife, kids, every one of them are part of the occupation of putting these events on. I was a little disappointed to hear those comments that it wasn't a home occupation compatible, because that's exactly how these type of venues are operated. It's by the people that live in those residences upon those facilities. I think it's a great move for Umatilla County. I think that it gives us an opportunity to bring several facilities kind of out of the shadows and gives an opportunity for us to at least reach out and monitor what is happening. And it does put on some sideboards and guidelines. So I I am impressed with the work that was put into this ordinance or this ordinance. I wholly support it.
I read all the exhibits and I appreciate the comments. I've been to several weddings in these types of locations. The Win Family Farm comes to mind and the barn. I think it's fantastic for the county and our residents. And I think it's like Mr. Whitney stated, it's a great source of revenue too for for some of these folks that have those types of properties. Yeah, I I agree with everything you two said too.
My only comment is when I look out my window, I am surrounded by orchard. I have wheat fields around me. I mean, I I am plopped right in the middle of farm ground. And we have tasting rooms that have opened up not too far from from where we live. In fact, three of them in the last ten years. And we're all, I mean, we all get along and we have people farming out there and these people have events. And there is absolutely no squabbles at all. So because I see this firsthand and have seen it firsthand, I I don't see any problem. And I think it's it's something that certainly can be done. I know it's certainly being being done on our end of the county. And I I'm all for it. Any more deliberation for the decision? All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So motion passes. We're going to adopt the findings. Thank you. Thank you, Sam.
Thank you.
Well, work went into this on a lot by a lot of people, so thank you.
Thank you.
Just what we have done with this farm, a lot of farm land is we just finished a conservation, he's been on it on nine hundred and forty some acres. Bill will be moving three miles to Umatilla River and Virg Creek to enhance the fisheries and wildlife. Federated tribes, EPA, first first stage that project has been done on about two miles above where the our main property is. And it's going to be a spectacular deal. Be and see what a real change. Putting that river back where they were when they were moved a hundred years ago and let it fulfill those will come out and the river is going to be put back to its original meandering. All fish wildlife, first drink is going steelhead. Steelhead for the. You mean property and I think.
Thank you. Moving on to item three.
Say good morning. Good afternoon, commissioners. Dan and I, Director of Reminstrated Services. For you is a request to renew the our virtue license, which is encryption software that allows us to send encrypted emails that the we send HIPAA, CGS, potential election information, many other things. And so multiple departments use it. It has gone up this year, but we haven't found a better service of these this product and it is over the five thousand dollar amount, so it's required a approval by the board.
Chair, move approval for seventy-two fifty to virtue.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you. Next on there is a request for invitation to bid for the flooring on the in the basement. As we talked about the basement of the courthouse here in Pendleton to resurface many ways of polishing the floor, staining the floor and we'd like to go and have a formal request, although issuance of invitation for bid to do that.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Fiber contract.
So the next one is a contract with Development, also known as Wind Waves, to provide fiber to the Stafford Henson Building in there and the total cost for insulation and getting the fiber there is ten thousand five hundred eleven dollars ninety-three cents. And then a monthly ongoing cost for internet service and connectivity back to the courthouse here to connect as part of our wide area network, three eighty-nine dollars.
I would love to make approval, make a motion for approval on this because today I tried to get on a a meeting and had to use my hotspot. And then when I got off, it was back on again, so.
This is that stack move for approval.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
I believe that's calling out there. I think that's with the sheriffs, but that's the software they use, so.
Okay. Next.
Want me to run this one?
The whole software payment.
This is this is an annual payment. The reason it was delayed is it actually went to the city of Umatilla instead of to the Umatilla County Sheriff's Office. It's for the it's their civil software tracking their their civil operation. I would move for approval.
I think it would have been downright neighborly for the city to just pay it.
Instead of sending it.
Yeah. With that, I will second motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion pass. Public Works Computer Purchase.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I'm the Public Works Director. What I have before you today is a request to purchase some new computers. IT came out and and reviewed what we have out there and and kind of thought it'd be nice if we got out of the nineteenth century and and moved our computer situation up a little bit.
So you got an upgrade from the stone tablet and chisel?
Yes, yeah. But plus the the fact that the software is some of it's outdated and whatnot. So this is this is going to get at least a good share of our computers up up to date and and back in where it should be. So the request is for ten thousand five hundred thirty-two dollars and fifty-eight cents in computers, software and upgrades.
Going to give you the one from the office.
Been moved and seconded. I do have a question. Adobe, what do you use Adobe for?
PDFs. PDFs, a lot of it is when we we get a lot of stuff from ODOT that requires digital signatures and things going back and forth and that's seems to be, that's what they want to use. And so it's just simpler for us to use it.
So, all right, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Motion passes. Public Works Vehicle Purchase.
So what we have here is a purchase of a all-wheel-drive snowplow. I know we're at the end of the snowplow season, but we've actually had our name on a list, a one list with surplus properties for a number of years now. Knowing that the state would be flushing some of these out at some point. This is certainly going to help us when we do have all those instances, when we do have heavy snow removed. Primarily, we use it with all wheel drive units in our footbills and situations. It's been very handy. So this particular one is is a little newer than than that's one we bought. Last one was an eighty-two vintage and we bought it in two thousand seventeen and and it's still running strong. And I I think we're going to get it, still get a number of years out of it. Simply in addition, price is right and and we felt that it was something that we could use moving forward.
Before I make a motion, can we modify this motion so if if there's another one available to Tom, we could authorize up to fifteen thousand? Or wait till it just comes through?
There is another one.
Yes, we did.
I didn't find out about.
We could. I I I move to approve the request for the purchase of a two thousand ten Volvo for fourteen thousand dollars and other and at the same time authorize up to fifteen thousand for the purchase of an additional surplus snowplow.
That work?
Yeah, that would be great.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Public Health Physician classification.
Hey, Commissioner, Joe Fumara, Director for UCO Health. You know, we recently opened the Hermiston Student Health Center at the beginning of the school year this year, staffed it with our practitioner and an OA two physician as we have with our centers here in Pendleton. As that center has been operating, they've been seeing a lot of students. They've been very busy. A number of those students, twenty-three percent of which that they've been seeing are uninsured, folks that should qualify for enrollment with the OHP, the OCCO program. We have a vacancy in in this current position. We'd like to reclassify it to an OA three so that as part of that service, we can actually help get them enrolled in. so that as part of that service, we can actually help get them enrolled in, into that insurance plan, which will allow us to both build more services and of course, you know, help them out for future moving forward. We did talk with Hermiston School District about this change as they are the ones putting the bill for expenses that are not being reimbursed by other sources. They have agreed to this for this purpose, the additional cost of this. So what we're standing for is to reclassify this position from an OA2 to an OA3 that will allow us to impose it for that position, try to get it filled again. Answer any questions if there are any.
I think it's beyond impressive. I think you guys, your team has just knocked a home run on that. I move for.
I'm going to second the approval, but I also want to just point out that while we typically don't do reclasses outside of the timeframe, the way you, the way you have that funding coming from an outside source makes this a whole lot easier for us to say yes.
The only comment I have is that they do a lot. I mean, this person is going to do a lot. And I know when you actually write down all of the tasks that an employee is supposed to do, I mean, it's, it looks massive and, you know, people get used to doing their role and it works fine, but wow. That's a lot going on. Anyway, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. The next thing we do, Public Health Computer Purchase.
Computer purchase. So these next two are related but separate purchases. We received a grant in cycle four from Oregon Health Authority for our reproductive health program. We, it is not unusual for us to get small grants for them to support this program. This cycle, we got much larger grants than we've been offered in the past. Infrastructure, monetization, requirements being it has to somehow touch a reproductive health program. So as part of the infrastructure grant, what we're proposing, we've been working with IT. And I think you guys have a list of all the items that are listed out here. But basically, all computer monitor, some expansion for some TV, TVs in our lobby for some informational purposes. All of those items that we, that could be qualified under this grant, we are trying to do upgrades on while we have money coming specifically for that. We try to touch all those pieces that we could because we don't often get grants like this. And so the current quote we have from IT for the list of purchases is $24,207. And we're looking for approval to make that purchase for those items.
I would move approval.
I'll second that one.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Public Health Supply Purchase.
So this is also tied to part of the same, same grant. Actually, two grants we got, one was for a total of $125,000, one was for $50,000 for a one-year period that we have to spend down. And so we're also trying to upgrade all of our equipment that we felt appropriate and do so tied with our clinic locations. New autoclave machine for sterilizing our equipments, new urinalysis testing, all of those types of items that fit with our routine visits that we have as part of our clinic. Going through our normal vendor, we purchased a good amount of our normal medical supplies is through McKesson. But we wanted to bring this, you know, some of our medical supplies don't routinely come through here because they're reoccurring purchases. This is beyond what we would normally do, but it's all being funded out of that reproductive health grant. And the total amount we're looking for is $27,345.66.
I move approval.
I second. It's been moved and seconded, or any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Property Appeals, Property Value Appeals Board.
It doesn't have the same reading.
It doesn't, it's easier.
The tax appeals were heard last year, last week by the Property Value Appeals Board. And the results of those hearings are reported in board for review and.
I'd move to adopt Order BCC 2025-013.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yeah, how did the, off the board come down on the unanimous all the way?
No, there was some discussion. I, I just wanted to say that Jaleen does a wonderful job as far as organizing everything. We had, we had 14, is that right? Maybe? Different appeals that came before the board and taxation and assessment, assessment and taxation did a wonderful job. They were very thorough, easy to understand and, you know, it wasn't planned on all the way. But good discussion and I thought it went very, very well.
One other question is, and I think I asked this last year and I forgot the answer. So on this, it says the total of assessed value, the net portion of it is a positive number. Does the assessed value go up?
Well, it depends on how you look at it. I mean, they were, the values were sustained.
It's an increase over last year. It's a net gain to the assessment. Thank you. I think I did it, so.
We have a very good motion. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye. You lose track in this. You should lose track.
Well, yeah, everybody gets to talk. Pump Station Project.
Do you want me to do it or you want to do it?
Back in December, the board approved an option to look into an additional water intake from the Flounder River. Be located near the Central Water Project Pump Station. The option was approved at that point. It is still in place. And what's before the board now is to see whether or not you want to move forward with this project. Feasibility study was completed and the estimates and cost was done for the project. We are now in the position to try to start negotiating with the potential seller.
Motion to discuss and authorize next steps for development of additional water intake source.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passes. City of Pendleton Funding.
Again, back in December, the board approved some funding for the city of Pendleton. This is to help with infrastructure improvements to Southwest 15th Street as part of a proposed housing development. Board approved 1.25 million from the Municipal Infrastructure Reserve Fund. And at that time, there was a discussion approved that the funds would be provided to the city, but would request that they be returned as they are repaid from the developers and other sources. The city is asking the county to reconsider that decision and would prefer that the money to stay with the city and not be returned to the county for.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any discussions? I have a, I have a comment to make and just from an outsider looking in kind of a thing. You know what? I hate to see that money not being available for other cities in the county. I, I fight for the east end or the north end of the county all the time. And the money just going back into the coffers for Pendleton use only. I'm sure there's a backstory on this, but I, I don't like to see that. I think, I honestly believe that money should be available for everyone, not just one person or not just one city. Anybody else?
And just for clarification purposes, the request was to delete the repayment provisions. He just moved to approve and there really isn't anything that says what.
Okay, all in favor say aye. Okay, thank you. That motion passes. A Board Payment.
This is the request to approve an authorization for payable that was submitted. This is to CLW. This is a portion of the central. Previously contracted with the consultants, there was a bonus for each phase of the project. And the request now is to pay for the one for the phase three of the project based on the current projected cost.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. IRZ Contract.
This request is to authorize a contract with IRZ Consulting. This is part of the Washington, Oregon Water Group. It's proposed project to bring water, a plenty of water to that area to replace water being pulled off. There is a scoping, the purchase of the contract is going for that project with an estimated cost of up to $20,000.
I move for approval.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? I'm glad that this is a scoping of the project because I don't know if I'm 100% sold on it. So, all right, been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Development Contract Amendment.
This request is to amend a recent agreement that was entered into. This is a project in the and what has been requested is to amend the agreement so that the date of the contract ending that was, so that any requirements, employment requirements are shared.
Any discussion?
I'll move for approval.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
This is a request from UVC Yumitilla-Moro Connect Project. The project includes a 14-mile transmission line to connect the ordinate switch yard in Yumitilla County to the Highway 730 switch yard in Laurel County. The infrastructure upgrade will provide enhanced reliability, support economic development, provide a path to help move renewable energy throughout the region. I would move for approval.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Dorn?
I have nothing but a quick, well-run meeting.
Something to say. I, I enjoyed some regional wrestling last week. And I know we had some state basketball going on in Pendleton. And, you know, it is just fun to see these kids doing great things. And a lot of these coaches are people that are right here in our community, families, kids. You know, it's just, it's just refreshing. But we always hear about the ugly and, you know, we always hear about things that aren't going so well, especially with our youth. But I'm telling you, I think there's people that are doing great things with our youth. And I think we have youth that are doing great things. So I just wanted to bring that up. It's fun to watch.
Yeah, they are.
Okay, meeting adjourned.